United States of America, consider it all for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alman, Senator.
Here.
Alman, Senator, after here. Alman Carl Schultz.
Mr. E. B. Uh.
Alman Ron Garnett.
Here.
Approval of the agenda.
I make a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Say. Motion made, taken on paper.
Aye.
opposed. Okay, approval of the agenda.
I make a motion for the approval of the.
Continue the agenda, I'm sorry. Continue the agenda.
Yes.
You second?
Yeah, sir.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Nobody sign up on the further form? Nobody, yeah? Presentation is flat. Okay, then do it one at a time. And that with it. And that.
And that.
We can stand behind the page. With a hammer, continue.
All right, this is a certificate of appreciation for Senator Hacker for being part of education service for city collector from two thousand nine to two thousand nineteen. And this is for David for his dedicated service, city collector from two thousand thirteen to two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you for that. I want you to have.
I'm sorry for the delay, we just took it from here.
Done it.
That's my part to you, Senator.
Approval of the city clerk should update the quick books.
Okay, so at the end of May, my quick books, my payroll is only obsolete with the, with the year I have, so basically I need to update my quick books so I can still do payroll. And it's gonna, it's gonna be about seven to eight hundred dollars.
Is that progress?
It's just a quick book.
Well, quick books is pushing people, their businesses.
They're wanting to go online, but I don't think I should go online. I don't think it's. It's feasible to go on, I mean, not really feasible, but there's so many hackers out there these days that, you know. So, but if everybody wants to get paid.
No, it's better.
And you don't have to have the.
I think it's better to have it here because he can get hijacked here.
My motion this year, I say that.
I make a motion that should, for the approval.
Is that your motion?
Motion made, taken on paper.
Aye.
Opposed?
Does it know, or a question you regularly back up?
Yes.
Now, then next one's gonna go pretty good, but I already planned it. We're gonna have to put the election and the installation on hold for a couple more days. There's a problem. And we ain't got the information back yet to clear anything. I mean, I won't be, no, he's not out, he's not in. Nobody's out, nobody's in. The Secretary of State, Department of.
Public.
Public everything on it. There's some questions to be answered. So, it just don't hold. The minute that we get information on it, we're acting. Up and down. But in the meantime. It, I just want to tell you, if nobody's nothing, I mean, nobody's out, nobody's in. If, if he died, then it'd be next in line, if he's in, it's over. It's up to them, not our, not our call. You understand? I mean, we should've known any day. But they just ain't got back with it and we. We only got back from one and they say, no, you're not, you're not it. But we went for the, we went to everybody, anybody. And they should've let us know. We were hoping we would get something for tonight.
Why would I be out? Just out of curiosity. So, why would I be out?
Because they made it up, we, but on what I knew of, he didn't pay county taxes.
Pay my taxes?
Not your county, they didn't pay county tax, according to the county law. Maybe?
Real estate.
You paid your city taxes where they were.
Real estate, yeah.
But they were late, but the, under the rule, everybody, it gotta be before the nomination closed, I mean, it's like. So, I know where you was at for that fact. That's all the things that gotta be in it. And they very soon refuse somebody's debt. I don't know what's gonna happen. I mean, I ain't treated no better, no different than anybody else. And if, if they say that down, you'll be for it and you have an equal right as anybody. But if they say no, well, I take that, well, you got alternatives. But we have, we take what they say.
Right, yeah.
So, with that, you know, that, that, now, I got to enter some closed meeting things, but I'm gonna cancel them tonight because you won't miss a thing, because you would've been in the closed meeting if. So, I'm gonna cancel a closed meeting. We'll have a regular meeting. So, swear in the two that's not contested, they're. Do that. Wish one of them in. If they believe we're doing it at the next meeting, our alcohol specials, swear you in, if that, I mean, whole man on devil on me, then go on to the next meeting, but I'll do it at the start of the next meeting. If, I'll let you know with the.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Ben, I got a question. On this, if you do get in, I have to put your full name, is that all right? Benjamin?
Yeah.
Because I know everybody calls you Ben today.
Yeah, no, that's.
I have to put your full name, is that all right?
Yeah.
They call worse.
Okay, so. Uh, I'm not gonna go ahead and do the President and Board to have a full vote. Uh, they, either the new and the whoever. So, what, still have to do it there, put it on. Then actually, I can, uh, go with the President and Board.
The approval table or anything?
We're everything table, need more than table, they face things through the next meeting or until we get the information enough to do that.
Next thing, we'll do that.
Okay, so, motion made and taken to table, so. We get the information we need to act one way or the other.
Make motions.
Uh, Brian made motion in that table, on paper?
Aye.
Opposed? Emergency management, you got anything?
I have an emergency report.
Please find me.
Uh, it's been a couple months since I've seen you, sorry about that, the table was scheduled and everything else, but. No, no, thank you for joining our report writing system that's on, I appreciate that, and I'll have our two thousand twenty-two reporting to the state done very soon, probably tomorrow, if not Monday, so. Working on cleaning up, I know as, as the weather gets warmer, the stuff's being uncovered, and we got the minivan out from, from the branch up on Fourth Street, and some camper was removed yesterday or the day before also, and a part of it disintegrated and left some of it, left some of the remnants of a camper, but. Working out with people at the end of the street, trying to find out who's, washer is upended at the end of Third Street also, so working on finding out the debris in yards, just been running traffic since I've been here. So, another real report, and no real calls for service, a couple of VIN verifications for people buying vehicles from outside. But, but again, available VSL or even all that stuff?
Yes, sir. There's an issue with a resident having their cat pull by some stray dogs, some stray dogs, there's a.
County pick that up, it's going to court.
There you go.
Assistant.
I got that one. Park department?
We had one medic call, one mutual aid call for St. Jen. Uh, we had a power line down and one first alarm, commercial fire for ourselves, and one NVA. The other thing is reminder of the April barbecue, the thirtieth. Hope everybody comes. Uh, we did get a smoker donated to us, a brand new smoker donated to us, I'm from Home Depot by Jeff Marshall, that we're gonna raffle off, anyways, I don't know if the raffling, uh, drawing will take place on barbecue, but we might run it until May, uh, before Memorial Day weekend, so anyways, so. Uh, it was very good, thankful for him doing that for us, that's pretty awesome. Uh, he actually always helps us out whenever we need something. The other thing is, is we're in the process of getting our meeting done, waiting on ten. Hopefully, I can get it this weekend or next week, hopefully, so we're waiting on that. Uh, availability's there now, and so that's what we're hopefully getting ready to work with.
And I try to get the tour, you to, who in, I'll get that, you get that.
Oh, I'm done, all right.
We need to tour them too often, Dan. I didn't, I said, then. You, uh, third eye, you, uh, sign their firm. You're free to. You, you were, uh. I was just trying to hide it with the camera, I didn't, come on, you ain't gonna hide, come on.
You're that, you're that.
That's how I hear the whole thing.
Okay, Katrina Ullman.
I, Katrina Ullman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
Wait, you do a vote thing, I think.
Oh, can I?
Yeah, they do their name, they vote, repeat together, I, do your name, and then.
I.
Katrina Ullman.
I, yeah.
Okay.
Do, do solemnly swear.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Missouri, provisions of all laws.
The provisions of all laws in this state, affecting cities of this class, and ordinances of the city that I possess the qualification to hire for such offices, such as.
The law of the state of Missouri.
And the laws.
And I will demean myself faithfully in said office.
And that I will demean myself faithfully in said office.
And we, we check, cut some corners there, but they got it down. But not to say a few words and you repeat that, but it's just a good reading, it's way more difficult to do that. So, okay, thank you, congratulations, thank you. Okay, I skipped over that, anybody? Okay, park department, you were done with that?
Yeah, I remember the same by that question for me, but yeah.
Yeah, anybody got anything? They say the barbecue is?
April thirtieth.
April thirtieth.
Pork steaks, broats, baked beans, paste outs, hopefully, we normally have a mix sale on five oh two, so.
Uh, street department.
Oh, spoke with John Dudley on the Kid's Ass Hall, said it'd be open in about two weeks. He said, the way it works, you go up there that morning, he said, there might be a law and law run, but you have to wait. You have to wait till you turn to get in, it might be an all day ordeal to get one load of bass hall. So, it's, uh, what we can get.
You got any like a better, get mine, get them all?
Yeah, we have more trucks, we, I don't know, but he said they take up four or five.
I guess you'll take the big truck. Where, where do you get that?
Let help.
Where?
Let help.
I think they've been over, haven't they? Dennis?
Yeah.
They got last year, didn't they?
Yeah, I think that's where they got last year.
I'm gonna play ten today, huh?
Yeah, the only place I was.
But, and we ain't saying a couple weeks?
Yeah, two weeks, they'll be opening up.
Yeah, we may not go for a week, before we go over here, then.
Yeah, we got a lot of patch, a lot of road work to do, a lot of bits to clean out, so.
Just wondering. There you go.
That should be it.
Uh, we got the ducts, we fixed four ducts now, good, real good, what good, they fixed that. And, uh, we took all the stuff off of it. We got them, doing good, they picked up a back hole and everything with it this week, took a back skeleton and everything, so. Good, they're good. Okay, water.
Great.
So, back teeth, back teeth are good. We do have an issue, and I'm not making a big sink out of it, but I'm gonna turn around with Marion Cliff residence. April texted me about a tarp, I didn't see it on, on the fence, I don't know how they even got it on the fence on the inside, but they had it on the fence, um, because that's secured gate, it's locked, there, there's no other way around, isn't there? And I know, I ain't seen them holding a car under. But they go down there, and I know what they do down there, I'm not stupid, but turn around, I guess they had the tarp up on the fence as a wind blocker, can't even put it up on our fence, I mean, I don't know, people wants to send a paper, letter to them.
I talked to them. They have it up there because they're sneaking out of the building before we set the alarm and spending the night down there, and then coming back to the building when they know the alarm is turned off.
Anyways, with that point, um, but.
Well, we do need to try to figure out how they got in there.
We're chugging up there a little while, again, turn around, because I got.
It's very good, somebody else can.
Yeah, I.
That's got barbed wire pins on it.
It's got, should have had three string of barbed wire on top of those. I don't know if they somehow flipped it over and hung it there and then hung it, you know, zip ties or whatever he did, I mean, it looked like this perfectly stretched out.
Dennis said those things were about that long at the bottom.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it was, it was pretty tight, I would have looked at it, it was pretty tight.
Thanks again, pegged it down, I turned around. But anyways, one that part, issue resolved on that. Um, had a problem with transducer switch up at Tower Two. Um, it called me three different times, turn around, I guess a connector got messed up, got it fixed, it's working properly now. Uh, it, uh, can't actually run over, turn around, because Tower One's the one who pushes the water to Tower Two, but it was showing me high level, high level, and it wasn't actually high level, so, hey, I got it fixed, um, the pressure went back down and everything. Um, other than that, that's all I'm worried about. And then sewer, turn around, we got, um, the hydrant, uh, got it installed down at sewer plant. Um, had to order some new bolts for the UV system and some crystal sleeves. Uh, we had an issue with water getting back into the UV room somehow, don't know how it happened. And it actually cracked some of the sleeves, so. The cost of that, turn around, a pretty good little amount, but had to do it for E coli through April through October, so. It's been our requirements. The other thing is, we'll be having a sewer inspection, uh, this next month, May first, for our permit. Turn around, DNR coming up, and I'll be here, we'll go through all our stuff that we need to go through paperwork and stuff, so. Um, the other thing is, tools on grinders, turn around, installed the new pit, nine ninety-four H Street last weekend, it went smooth, smoother than I thought it was going to be. Uh, nothing to do with weight on it, and, uh, turn around, had to work on five grinders, normal routine maintenance, changing contactors and, uh, capacitors, so.
There you go.
Hey.
I think one day they'd, a lot, I'd like to appreciate Paul Belkin to let the, get his tarp cold. We do pay them for it, but he don't charge us just for the hours that we use and things, to go get and bring it back, and. He saves us lots of money, and because Frankie can only do things, tell him in the afternoon or on Saturdays and things, and we kept it for a week, but we only used it six hours. And we were renting one, we'd have to pay everyone on the day, so it was really, it was a real nice piece of equipment, so. When we send a check this time, we're gonna send him, congratulate, and thanking you for treating us like he does, because. I mean, uh, if you go rent one, you pay the whole time you got it, and if you ask people, like, uh, we kept it for a week, but we only used it for six hours, but we had two different projects, you have to do it two different times, and that had to be done Saturday, so. I'm not only for you originally, before you, Paul Belkin, so painting in the, that's. You know, when we do get it, we may not get it. You may not send the bill for it, might as well, but we'll take it up. All right. Park cemetery?
Nothing to record, I have a question about, you know, this warmer weather, do you want the gates locked at night, or?
In the cemetery?
Not to the cemetery, to the park.
I guess it's gonna be pretty much time, we, we leave it open, don't we, in the summer?
Uh, summertime, we normally even open all the way until Halloween. And then we can open it up regardless, if we don't open the gates, people still want in and out, I watch them every day, so. I mean, vehicles can't get in there to tear anything up, but, you know, no person, people can, but.
I haven't, I haven't had a chance to do all the boards, but they had the easily, I don't even know, back Sunday. And we, he got to have some work done on the bathrooms again. I spoke with the chamber, and I think we're gonna get, maybe that's a cure. I haven't had a chance to get back with them yet, because I need to give them some kind of dollar figure, but we're gonna rev out the water and make the water drain down and be no more freezing of the water and stuff, and put new doors on, so. So, I need to get a dollar figure, but I'm pretty sure the chamber will along with it, because I got a little in front with it. But I just, I, I don't know if we're gonna do some over the end house or some of it, or just conduct all of it done, and I just see how much difference it's gonna be, and if they balk on being too high, we'll do it in house, and. If my brother has contact that's coming in and do it and be done with it, because we got enough work to do now. Okay? Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Citizen participation, you guys got, anybody got any questions, names, you got, we have three minutes, and the board can extend the time if you need more time, if you got, you, you read down the same address?
Yes, yeah, I've been here for five years.
Okay, then, you give your name and where you live and.
Yeah, my name's Marcus Robson.
You need to say that.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Uh, my name's Marcus Robson, I've been here for about five years. Uh, I guess the only concern I had is, we had the concern with the, uh, the spraying, uh, those fields around our homes, uh, been killing our gardens, and my kids play right there beside it. We, it's been an issue, we just wanted to see what we can do about, see if the farmer can stop spraying, you know, right so close to our house, so.
Who did?
Uh, wasn't even the farmer.
Roots.
Oh, roots?
Yeah.
Yeah, last year they come through and just roach.
They roach.
Everybody's garden.
Everybody's trees, flowers, plants, everything.
Pretty well, I ever talked to them, see, and some experience with that, and they usually pretty good people.
Oh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not that farmer.
But some of the farmers, you know, they get to a pole behind, they, they get careless to do it on windy days and everything else, but.
Right.
I, I have coffee with one of the graves, they'll be Friday and Monday, so.
Yeah, uh, you know, and just my kids are playing right there beside too, and it's just.
Yeah.
The whole swing sets of Dallas, and their, their pools.
Our pool is contaminated, yeah.
It's just, it seems like, seems kind of an issue where the health concern too, so.
I would definitely get with them all, you know, I'll report back next month or November, but I don't know, right now, we saw the spray, they done did it, haven't they?
They fertilized, I don't think they sprayed herbs.
It was just, uh, it was a herbicide, I think.
I said they sprayed the herbicide just today in my home, by my house.
But I will talk to them, I tell them, I get, I'll just say several complaints, anybody got garden, just.
But, yeah, they got, got all the worst stuff, and then killed us, it's crazy.
Yeah.
I didn't appreciate that, I understand, I make garden too, I, it don't have, a lot of work.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of work, yes, yep.
Okay, did anybody else got anything, they need to ask about? But, uh, if that comes down, then I'll get over there, one of them.
Yep.
But if, if it's positive, we just wait to the next meeting, and we swear again, when the meeting starts, we're, we're open, and swear again, and what's left to be.
Yep.
And if not, we'll swear, I knew it's gonna be.
Yep.
All right.
Hey, Carl, there was somebody that came down to ask, um, if we could have chickens in city limits, and if we can't have chickens, why can't we have chickens? Because people have roosters.
Well, first, but, I, that, that's in their favor, do you wanna respond?
Why?
About chickens. Most people don't like when we call roosters, growls, and chickens, and they, and I, we have, we have had chickens, but. Now, I know we got people in downtown, and we're gonna.
Roosters.
We're gonna move there.
Very good.
We're gonna move on it. But, uh, because at the present time.
They just wanna know, because with the price of eggs going up, they would like to raise their own chickens to have their own eggs, which is kind of a scary.
Horse gone up, and beef gone up, and everything gone up, so you can't, you can't go for that, because they go, they ain't never gonna go back to none. But they.
I think.
This has been a fact before, and most people oppose chickens, because they don't like to be woke up a chicken and growled and thing. We had one family, whose grandfather then were years and years, and finally all died out, then come the old chickens, they would, because their grandfather for twenty years.
But in urban environments where they have chickens, uh, horses and sport chickens, they just, uh, no roosters.
No rooster.
You got a rooster, you ain't got a good egg. I mean, that's up to them, that might be, there ain't no demon, but they are.
I have had trade differences.
You come around, and I'll turn to you one without rooster, one with it, you'll tell me.
I know, I know what you're talking about, but I'm too crazy, too fond of the white stuff.
I'm, 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 it was about me one way or the other, but I didn't know if some people don't like chickens, so, we've had it there for.
St. Jen is.
This has been an issue for forty years.
St. Jen is a one with the poor chickens and no roosters.
Yeah, no rooster.
No rooster, it takes.
Perry County, so.
Is there really we can change that, though? I mean, like, we're gonna have chickens, we don't necessarily have to have a rooster to lay eggs, I mean, like, you. I had chickens last year.
No, they don't have to have roosters to lay eggs, but they have to have rooster to have fur legs.
Right, just maybe we just want the eggs to, to be fertilized.
That's what I did with the next. I buy my own, I get fur legs. But. Unless there's somebody that can show up, I mean, if you get a petition to get it passed, and by, the great majority, majority of the people, but I, I don't wanna be a big controversial, it's really, neighbors are gonna be fighting, and first place, the first thing they're gonna put down in the ordinance, if we bother your neighbor and they complain, you'll have to do something about it, that's, that's almost on any animal. If you pass it, then your, your chickens or everything is by your neighbors, and they complain, then you gotta get rid of it.
So, Katrina.
Almost every city that's got that, got that in the ordinance.
Do you have a fair amount of people that still come in to pay the bills here at the window?
Yes.
Do you wanna put a thing, you know, you mentioned someone came in and asked about it, they signed their name, how many people.
He already said that he would get petitions, so, if he needed you.
And we're not gonna run a poll here and tell you all, or something like that, we're like, you're gonna get a petition up or something, feel free. But it's not our place to run a poll on that, and we arrived.
Yeah, the gentleman that asked that already said he would run a petition if he needed you. He has enough people.
Yeah, I've talked to quite a few, one, two, three, three, four, five, can't.
I, I think that if we have a limit and no roosters, I think it would be okay. I, as long as they're in a pen and they're not gonna get out in everybody's yard, I don't see why not.
Well, I know there's a few that are ready, they're out right now, they're out in, set it up, but it's a problem, it's gonna be a problem. Now, I told people, you give permission, I'm not talking against, but I like to eat them, and chickens themselves. But they're a bit of love, and people gonna get mad, they'll be up and down. But anything you do, people get mad, so.
They'll make them, they'll die. You know, there were dogs running.
If you them four there or whoever's sitting there, then if people, then I, then I have to make them mad. Okay? But if you show a good petition and a good business. But if, if you show a petition and it gets a good amount of numbers, and we work, can work up a ordinance from different towns and see which one works best to choose out of those communities.
Okay.
Don't bother me. I ain't got no close neighbor, I own one whole block on them side, big boy, that one, so the rest of them blown away. But I do know people like, just have chickens. Anything else, anybody else? Now, I won't get with the break going, and then I'll where you living up there?
I live on the backside of Circle Drive, he's next, man.
Thanks for our neighbor, guys.
There's a lot between us.
Okay. On the same side?
Uh, you can say
Yeah, on the backside.
On the backside, porch filled there.
And Les and them are on the same side, our neighbor and them are on the same side, and they roached everything last year.
But I, and I, I maybe go up there with Buddy Briggs and two of them was going on
I sent something to them last year.
That way, fun. I, I probably talked to Bobby Hughes, more easier to talk to him, something like that. Okay? Okay, motion to adjourn, Ben.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion made, they all favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Never had a vote yet.